And also, it's been a couple of weeks, remember, just let us know where you're calling in from, please.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
Councilmember Betts.
President participating remotely from Richmond, Virginia.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing.
Councilmember Garza.
President participating remotely from Lansing.
Councilmember Spitzley. Seven members present, you have a call.
Thank you. First up is the approval of our minutes from February 22nd, Mr. Vice President.
President Spatafor had moved the meeting minutes as presented.
Minutes have been moved, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, was Sherri, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda for business, or rather is, our next item is public comment on agenda items. So those of you who are in the audience who wish to make a comment, you may do so by raising your hand on Zoom, you may do that with the Alt-Y function on the PC, Option-Y on a Mac, or Star 9 on your phone. You'll be given about exactly three minutes, rather, to speak to the council. And we will close public comment at the conclusion of the first speaker, should that be necessary. So again, to make comment on agenda items this evening, so the redistricting commission and our future public meetings, as well as if you wish to make comment about our closed session, you may do so, I see no hands. So we have tonight, many of you are aware of the fact that we have now a new redistricting process in the state of Michigan. We were, I was reached out by the redistricting commission that they're doing presentations to local governments to update local leaders on that process and how it works. They're in the news right now, I know, maybe they'll speak to that. And one of the district members, when I saw his name on the list, was a very familiar local person, MC Rothhorn, who is here with us this evening. I got to know MC when he was involved with the parent community advisory council, I think school district, and pretty active in his neighborhood. So he's here this evening to present for us. He promises it will take no more than two and a half to three hours, so we'll be out of here in no time. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to hear about this, and I just want to remind folks that are paying attention online or at home, the redistricting process will impact us, but not the city council races. Those are done at a different level and not this year. So the ward seats will not be redrawn for the 2021 election that's coming up. So MC, the floor is yours, and how we're going to do this is probably just let you get through your presentation, and then if there's questions, we'll do them at the end. It's much easier to play traffic cop that way.
Good, just want to say hi to all you, thanks very much for letting me be here, and yeah, good to see y'all. So I will share the screen. And present. Can you see it? Alright.
Yes, we can.
Try to move it, well, I guess I'm just going to look at a different screen, I'm not going to look at you. So I am one of thirteen, and we are formed because there was a ballot initiative passed in 2018 for voters and not legislators to take responsibility for the nonpartisan redistricting and creation of the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. We're trying to brand it as MICRC. We are comprised of thirteen randomly selected Michigan residents, that includes four Democrats, five independents, and four Republicans. It is random, that means that we do not necessarily, we do represent the whole state, and we were randomly chosen, so there is no one, for example, from the UP, it was again, just randomly chosen. The MICRC is responsible for redistricting the United States congressional districts, Michigan House, and the Michigan Senate districts. Before commissioners draft any redistricting plan, the commission shall hold at least ten public hearings throughout the state of Michigan. We are in the process of, yeah, drawing them, we had a proposal for about eighteen in the first round, and we are going to, yeah, we've sent that back, we're waiting for a final, but we're looking to do at least ten, as it says, and we will, yeah, make those as clear as soon as possible, but likely to start in May. And the purpose of these meetings, right, these public hearings, they are to inform the public about the redistricting process, to share the purpose and responsibilities of the commission, and solicit information from the public about potential redistricting plans. The goal is to try to have as much input in these ten public hearings, create plans while we're in those meetings, and then go back for a second round of meetings, or hearings, I should say, with the input that everyone has given in the first round. So there will be a second round to more or less give feedback on the final maps. There will not be the same number, but that's the, that's more or less the process in a nutshell right now. And, yeah, we'd like to have questions, and we'd like to increase the awareness. So I really appreciate this opportunity, and I suppose what I'd like to do is try to have other people that are listening or engaged in any way, try to, yeah, reach out to redistricting@michigan.gov and reach out to me. And that's, yeah, questions or comments, thanks again for this opportunity.
Sure, thank you. So what we'll probably do, MC, is if you could send that PowerPoint to our office manager, we'll have that posted on our documents section on our website for people to take a look at. I do see a question from Councilmember Wood.
Hi, MC. My question would be, when you go out to the public, are you taking the current maps, or do you have some, you know, potential future maps that people will be able to comment on? How does that process work?
That's a great question, we don't know yet, honestly. We do have those, whatever options you have, you know, shared right now is what we're looking at. We do have a map drawing company that we haven't engaged, but we have made an offer. We don't know, they will likely guide us, meaning they will likely help us with that process. Again, we don't know yet what the best way to proceed is, we don't know if we should start with a blank slate, for example, and draw it, but what we do know is that it will be 100% transparent, and that means that we will start with something, and whatever is manipulated or changed will be live in that public hearing.
I just think that, one, obviously having the current districting is important to have that, but then, maybe reasons why you would look at making changes to the maps? Is it because of population shifts? Is it because of, you know, those types of questions that would allow you to get maybe some more definitive information versus, you know, we've all been involved in charrettes and things like that, and when you open it up to just anything, you know, you spend a lot of time all over the place and trying to get it focused back into into something core is sometimes difficult. So that's my only thought process on this, would be, you know, and that would help possibly direct people on how they can comment better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, thank you, Councilmember, what are you all set?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, MC, for your service. And just to clarify, what is the next thing people should look out for or do, and I'm sorry if I missed it.
Great question. The next step, I suppose, is, hmm, what is the next step? The next step is not to wait. I believe, so we do have something that is, and this speaks maybe to some of the criteria that Carol was addressing, and forgive me, you know, because I know so many of you by first names, I probably should say like council member and all that, forgive me.
Too well, thank you.
Okay. So I believe the next, so their communities of interest is as a priority. And I believe, Brian, that is probably our next step for members, is to identify themselves, understand if a neighborhood, for example, wants to stay intact, or if there's a region that is suggested, you know, sort of like that we, you know, for example, we've learned that Battle Creek does not necessarily identify with the Grand Rapids representation that they currently have. Battle Creek and Kalamazoo would, as a region, there was a representative that spoke to us, and, yeah, so they are suggesting themselves to be a community of interest. And those communities of interest can be not just commercial, they can be, but they cannot be political, but they can be cultural, they can be, again, economics or commercial, they can be, they are not well-defined. And so I think, again, to try to answer your question, the next step is to sort of identify a, yeah, a way that if you believe that as an individual, that you have a community of interest that shouldn't be broken up, that should be, or that should be included with others, because we have a like, we have a similarity, and we want to be together. It's important to try to understand the relationship and sort of substantiate it. So I suppose that's probably a good next step, and there are organizations, I believe, the Voters and Politicians, League of Women Voters, gosh, there are several, and there's in our, you know, so our academic neighbor here, Michigan State University, they have, and University of Michigan as well, they both have institutes that I'm not familiar with at the moment, but they, each of them has suggested that there is, there are communities of interest, and they have done outreach, and I believe that's where neighbors or anyone here in Lansing that is interested could seek sort of a definition or some insight on how to understand whether I, yeah, how do I advocate for a community of interest, or understand if I actually have a community of interest. I hope that helps you, yeah, as a next step, again, that's the most proactive piece, and this is in it, this might be in addition to the public hearings, meaning you might bring this information to the public hearings, and the public hearings are not the only venue where these, where that information, that it could be a map that is drawn that says this is the region that I believe is, you know, that should be held together, or we believe that this, these regions should not belong together, for example. And so that can be submitted as a map online, that could be submitted through public comment. Again, just written email, and it's, everything's held in public record, and we will, yeah, make sure to take it into consideration when we get to the maps and drawing them.
Thank you, and when is the public hearing, I'm sorry.
We don't know yet. We're still planning them, but if, not if, they will start, but they're not going to start this month, and they're not likely going to start in April, we're looking at May and June, yeah, and then, yeah, if we have to go longer, but what we do know is that we have, yeah, census delays, and so we're just going to keep moving ahead and piecing it together as best we can, but we're not, we're not going to delay the public outreach, if you will, and the public hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. MC, it looks like you may have answered all our questions. I know that we'll probably have more, we not to get ahold of you, but this was very helpful to get out in the public, you know, get talked about. I see a couple reporters here, so I hope that they may be reaching out to you as well to talk about the process and how it might impact Lansing. But we appreciate you stepping up and serving on this commission.
Thank you, take care, y'all.
You have a good night, good to see you. So, the next thing I will, we're going to discuss is the future of this setup. So I'm just bringing this up as an option for us to talk about. The governor, or I'm sorry, Elizabeth Hertel, the Director of Health and Human Services, has altered the gathering restrictions, and we may now gather in person up to 25 people. And then there's even, I'm going to have to lean on Jim later to clarify, there's even some possibility of in a larger entertainment venue of up to 300 people from out, without the same household, if the capacity is greater than 600. So that puts a few things on the table for us. We can figure out, you have to do social distancing and masks and all those types of things. We can figure out a way to bring the city council back in person to chambers with a very, very limited in-person audience, and still provide a Zoom option for council members and the public to participate. We can continue on Zoom, fully on Zoom, public and council, or we can look to a larger venue such as the SWAC or the auditorium at Hill, things like that. We'd have to probably change our backup council space, but that's a resolution that's pretty easy to do. And add more public, it gets a little more complicated to add the hybrid option to that meeting if we're not sitting in City Hall. So those are kind of the three, I think it's possible and doable, I have to meet with Dominic from City TV and Sherri to kind of walk through what it might look like at SWAC if we did a hybrid, if it was possible. I do know it's possible at City Hall, because we tried to do it when it was illegal and had to cancel that meeting. So we know we can do it there, that would still allow council members who are not comfortable getting into the public space for various reasons related to health, to participate remotely, and it would allow the public still to come in virtually. Regardless of where we sit, we will continue to broadcast on City TV as we've done since it started years ago. So there will still be available for public to watch the meetings. I just can't guarantee Monday night at 5:47, that if we go to SWAC for a larger in-person audience, that we could also ensure a hybrid Zoom option. So I'm going to open this up for discussion, I don't necessarily think we have to make a decision tonight. There's no mandate that you do in-person meetings. I just wanted us to talk about it, because I'm pretty fatigued staring at a computer Monday nights, but I also know that there are very real health concerns and some very strong considerations. So it's not a decision I was comfortable making with Adam alone and wanted your input. So we'll start with you, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I would be inclined to look at bringing us back to City Hall and continuing the Zoom for the public. We could have some participation in the chamber, limited participation in the chamber for those that wanted to actually come down to and speak to us. But I think that would be the best way to start getting back into some normality. My biggest concern in going to SWAC or to Hill is that we might not then get the participation from the public that are not ready yet to come out to gatherings. And I think, especially when we're talking about our budget right now, at the end of March, that it would be extremely important, you know, again, I think we play off of each other when we're asking questions and looking at people, you know, during those periods of time, that I think it would be beneficial. And, you know, I can only speak for myself at my age and some of my health conditions. I've had my first vaccination, vaccine, I will be getting my second one next week. You know, I think there's the ability for those that have health concerns that, you know, that they can get those now, so. But I think the other thing is, we need to know from the administration, when are they looking at opening up the building? You know, we can make all the plans in the world, but if they're not going to open it up, and we don't also have a cleaning mechanism in place if people were to be in the audience that would come up to the to the podium to speak, that we need to make sure that those are wiped down, taken care of, and that we have somebody there to do that. That's my two cents.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember Wood. Next, I see Councilmember Hussein and then Councilmember Betts.
That was a heck of a lot more than two cents, I think you took just about everything I was going to say, Councilmember Wood. But in any event, you know, I tend to agree, I think if we are going to go back, I think council chambers makes the most sense, because that way we can continue to Zoom folks in. We've had a lot of conversation, right, regarding, you know, what this participation has looked like? Has this been debilitating, right, for some folks in terms of being able to get out and participate in their government? Or has it really been empowering for some? And I think we've seen more over the past, you know, year, we've seen more public input and participation than I think we've ever seen. At least we've seen it sustained for a longer period of time than I've ever seen. So I don't want to extinguish that. And so if going to SWAC would in fact cause, you know, a situation where we could not allow folks to access and to participate with their government that are not yet comfortable, you know, obviously coming out and being in, you know, crowds, even with the social distancing and the masks and things like that, then I think we err on the side of caution, I think we do it in, you know, on the top floor of City Hall, where we have some of the infrastructure in place to allow for a hybrid meeting. I think it's also incredibly important that we, that we continue to allow as long as possible those folks that might be senior or immunocompromised, whether that be council members or whether that be staff that we're going to be expecting to participate in these meetings, that we also allow them to participate remotely. So as long as those things are considered, I am okay with coming back to the top floor of City Hall just as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor, I guess though, one concern that I'd like to raise about coming back to City Hall is with the 25-person limit, making sure, or making sure that we have contingencies for if more than 25 people show up to City Hall to show up to a meeting. And I think that we might need to think about creating a list of people who can attend or making a requirement that the person doesn't have broadband access or something like that for public participation in the meeting. And if we can't do that, I think that would be best to have fully virtual public participation while we as council people go to City Hall. I think that that would just be my preference to make sure that things continue to move smoothly.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts, and my hope would be that we'd set up a television in the lobby for an additional 25 to be able to go and overflow. That's, I know, you know my day job, I work with school districts, and they're doing a lot of superintendent searches right now, and that's how they're doing it, is 25 in the boardroom, 25 in the lobby, that kind of thing. And I even think we could probably squint and count chambers as two different rooms, as the gallery and the, and the the dais, if we wanted to get, so we didn't have to count staff and council members if we needed to get that. I know Sherri says we can fit 26 people in the audience with social distancing measures in place, so we do have a good space for it, the problem comes in if there are more than 25 people, and that would just require, I think, some legwork down at the door with letting people up in the elevator. So, Councilmember Jackson, I'm going to get to you, I just want to make a note that I have reached out to Nick Tate, and he said he's able to speak to us at least about what they're talking about. I'm going to go with Councilmember Jackson first, and then Mr. Tate, Brian, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, really quick, I pretty much agree with what most everybody said. I agree that if SWAC can't do virtual, then there's no way we can do it, because that would exclude all the people who aren't comfortable coming in or can't come in. But also, if we have to limit the amount of citizens that can come into the stands and like have a possible list, I think that's problematic, where I would just be concerned about it, where it's almost kind of as councilperson Betts said, we're all in there or not. But I would also want to hear public comment from people listening and possible people who would either be participating or not, to see if they are comfortable with either us all being in, or even ones of us wants to be in chambers and nobody allowed but by Zoom participation, or comfortable with having, knowing that there's a limit of who can come, and that somehow we're going to have to establish who those people are on a weekly basis. Because I would hate to see that we do all this work, but then there's a lot of concerns about what we decided, because we didn't hear what everybody had to say for the most part, and there could be some reason to have different opinions.
Thank you, I see a couple hands, and then Mr. Tate will get to you, City Attorney Smirka.
Just that, on the City Hall lobby, there's plenty of history to having that available when we had overflow crowds even before Zoom, so it's not anything new. We could actually, I mean, I'm not the logistics person, but.
Yeah, and there's always been fire marshal restrictions on the number of people that come to a city council meeting. We don't usually hit it, but they've always been there. Councilmember Wood, and Councilmember Dunbar.
Just to speak and to add to that, we have had issues at council where we have had hundreds of people come up. And what we have done is, you know, because of the fire code, we've allowed so many up from the lobby, sometimes we've even had them outside, we're getting into better weather. And so if that were an issue that we had more people, I'm not sure why we wouldn't do something where you could have 20-some people in, make their comments, have them, as they leave, bring in the next group, so that you could continue to have, and not making choices of who can be present and who can't be present. Well, I know Eric, I know Sherri, both have worked on that, where you had one in the lobby and one up on the floor counting, and as they went down, they were doing walkie-talkies back and forth, going, okay, you can now let up five more people. So there is the ability to do that.
But only two in an elevator at a time. Councilmember Dunbar, and then I'm going to call on Mr. Tate.
Thank you, I, my, my personal preference is to continue virtually while we can. I, I don't feel comfortable going back to City Hall yet, and I don't know how we're going to configure. I mean, I guess some of us will have to be in the well, because we don't have the spacing on the dais in order to have all of us up there. I also am concerned about if we do rotate people through 25 in the chamber and then have them, who's going to in-between clean the seats? And, and that kind of a thing, like I'm, you know, anything anybody touches up there, anybody, I just, I don't know how logistically we would do that. Unless you just want to hold everybody to their own accord and say, here's the hand sanitizer, do as you wish. But I'm, I think that's a little too loose for me. So I'm listening to everybody's comments, but for me personally, I think if you guys go back, I would probably still stay virtual until at least I get vaccinated.
And I will say too, Councilmember Dunbar, I would completely respect that, and that's why we're having this discussion. And I want to, Sherri did a lot of front-end work in March, or April, or May, or possibly June, I don't, the months all run together to me at this point. But with figuring out who would sit where, there is now Plexiglas in between the seats of the, the dais is just council members with the city attorneys and the clerk's office off to the sides and different tables, and then a few, and then mayor and staff down in the well. It was basically, we tried to look at six feet, it's a bigger space than you think it is, I think, but we did, we did put plastic in and all that kind of stuff and have all that figured out. But those are all considerations, and we will definitely have to think about it. Mr. Tate, maybe could you address the question that Councilmember Wood had, was specifically, do we know even if the building would be open to the public and that kind of stuff? So I guess we're looking to you for some advice as to what the plan might be, or when you might be having those conversations.
Sure, thank you, President Spatafor. So we are starting those conversations about what bringing the public back into especially City Hall looks like. For the council's benefit, ultimately, that what we're really following in terms of what the state is doing is the prohibition of having employees come into the workplace. You know, once employees are to be brought back, I think there's a very strong possibility that we'll fully open to the public again. Having said that, clearly through the end of this month, that's not a possibility, but we continue to have discussions internally, and as well as with our state partners to try and get some sort of idea as to when we think that date will arrive. I do think that some of the recommendations that have been made today, I've written them down, and I want to incorporate that in some of our discussions that we're already having. As Councilmember Wood has stated, we do have some folks internal to the city that have dealt with getting people in and out of, you know, confined spaces and making sure that we could do it safely. So I fully expect that the administration will lean on the expertise, frankly, of especially district court, as well as some of our boards and commissions that have been able to successfully, at least in my opinion, execute those meetings in a safe manner. So we are having those discussions, we don't have a solid date yet, but as soon as we do have a date, I'll make sure that council knows.
Thank you, and Mr. Tate, is it, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm still a little new here around here. If we said we wanted to have council meetings, the administration would give us a way to figure that out, right? It's not like we'd have to wait for the building to be open.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Doesn't sound like we're going to be that heavy-handed, but just wanted to make sure that we had that option. Okay, well, what I hear from folks is a willingness to at least maybe try for some hybrid meetings. If that, if it's possible to do it in a safe manner, we have to work through the logistics. I mean, obviously. The challenges of a 10th floor office space are there in terms of getting a limited number of people in and out safely or in a healthy way. So I think that's one thing. I know I'm meeting with Sherry and Dominic from City TV to kind of walk through a SWAC setup. What I heard from folks was SWAC wasn't appealing because we couldn't offer that hybrid option. But if we can offer the hybrid option, does that change our thinking about space for a hybrid meeting? Because I heard a lot of pushback on SWAC if we couldn't do hybrid there, but if we can offer the Zoom participation for the public and council members, does that change your thinking on trying it at SWAC?
It does. For me, it makes it more attractive because it sounds like it would be safer and easier to social distance and get people in and out.
Yeah, and there's a one entry point and one exit point that we could steer steer. Public traffic, traffic's not a bad, not a great word, but you know, the the flow of people through.
And maybe some, maybe look at who has which place has better ventilation.
None of them. We would definitely have a mask mandate in place. I mean, that that's that's a given. Carol, what about you? I'm sorry, Councilmember, you you mentioned the City Hall was your preference. In the context of a hybrid meeting, but if it does, the does the space really matter if if we can, if we can accommodate the hybrid meeting?
I'm just concerned with the SWAC building. I know we have. Leaking water issues we have, you know, there's, there's a number of. Of things with that building and and I think, you know, Councilmember Jackson hit it on the head. The ventilation would be the one concern. That I'd have more than anything else with that particular building. But, you know, if. It's something that that we have our crews over there taking a look at and and making adjustments, then. You know. I guess I could go along with the SWAC building. It's not my, it's not my preference, but that's what it, that's what it is. That's what it is.
I will, I'll ask around to the facilities people too, but my my understanding is that the ventilation system at City Hall is probably not any better than the one at SWAC. And the SWAC space is a lot larger space. So I'm just from a from a reference point, I don't know that that's going to be a. Huge difference over there, but point taken. Did anyone else want to weigh in on this before we we call it good? We won't make a decision unless the council makes a decision together. So this will be something I'm going to gather more information, hearing from all of you, and then we'll decide probably in two weeks. What we want to do going forward. As of right now, City of Lansing is covered. The law after March 31st changes related to Open Meetings Act and virtual meetings. But because we have been willing to extend our state of emergency, that does not affect us yet. So we'll have to change some wording on our agendas, but other than that, we can still meet virtually 100%. So we don't have to decide this by the 31st is the point of the story. I just didn't know, like me, if you all were. Fatigued with these types of meetings and wanted to go go back and see each other. That was certainly on my mind as well. And also there there is some bit of concern for my for me that. Doing only virtual may have, while we've seen record numbers of participation in a sustained way. There may be some folks that have, I know, for instance, one of our regular folks that comes to council has reached out to me and said that she just doesn't do that. And she watches us on TV, but doesn't come to the meetings anymore. So there are some folks that have been, I think, disenfranchised by this process, even though I believe we've tried to make it as easy to participate as possible. There are still been some folks that have been left behind. So. All right. I'm going to put a pin in this and we'll call it a day on that subject. The next item is a closed session and we're going to turn it over to Vice President Hussein, who won't be taking up as much time with this motion as the usual closed session motion. And I will remind you before we go into closed session, that if you're with other people, please put on headphones or headsets or get away from other people. In a closed session, what we're saying is is confidential information and we'll hear about it in closed session.
Sure. Pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section C of the Open Meetings Act, I hereby move that we recess in a closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement. Between City of Lansing, the City of Lansing, and the local number 421 International Association of Firefighters for the period covering July 1st, 2019. Through June 30 of 2022, as requested by the city.
There is a proper motion. Councilmember Wood.
This is a question for Jim. I I heard President Spataford say put on. Earphones, you know, if you're in a room with someone else and and that. The problem is, is that if you're asking questions, that person can hear the questions that you're asking. You know, we don't even allow reporters to sit outside the door when the door is closed. So I have some concerns if people have other people in the room with them with this. Or in a car or anything else.
We have the issue of. The ethics ordinance to council member about reviewing information before the time for disclosure. And that generally applies to closed sessions. I think the better practice is not to have anyone around at that time able to hear. The discussions that are going on.
Okay, thank you. We'll call the roll then.
Point and order for clarifications, President Spataford. What we're saying then is if you have someone else in the room with you and you cannot leave from there. Then you cannot participate. In this meeting.
That's a better practice because otherwise someone's going to overhear the conversation that's going in into. Going in involved in closed session. Yes.
Okay.
All right, then let's call the order, call the roll, and we will deal with that in closed session.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spataford.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1.
Hey, well, there's a link in your email box to get to the next one, and hopefully this one doesn't cause problems for the next meeting like last week's did. So leave this one, come back to closed session, and we will come back to open session because there is an item for approval on this agenda yet. So it is 6:40. We are back in session. So the next item on our agenda is item 6B, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the contract of the IAFF, sorry, between the City of Lansing and IAFF 421. Just very quickly, this is a three-year contract. It does include modest. Wage increases of 2.5 and 2% respectively. It that those wages will be, or I should say those raises will be tacked on retroactively. The final average compensation schedule for pension is moving from two years to three years, which should result in some savings for the City of Lansing. In addition, there is a small benefit for those individuals that choose to stay on after year 25. Up to this point, we have seen pretty much everyone work 25 and out and because there really is no. Benefit when we when we look at retirement to stay on beyond 25, we've increased, or I should say, we've added a small benefit for those individuals. That would like to stay on 25 or 30 years and that would be 1% of pay. We do have, in terms of new hires, we we are moving away from retirement healthcare and moving to health savings accounts. There is a five-year vesting period with regards to those HSAs. The employee would put in 3% and the city would put in 4% with regards to those individuals hired after 2014. I hope I got this right. We're moving pretty quickly. The city can move to a different carrier, a health carrier, as long as the products mirror one another. And then there were just a few other things that were. Also added in the wage differential for ambulance rides is an example, or ambulance service was increased. The time off and the time on schedule that was. I should say that has been common since the memorandum memorandum of understanding was passed. Is now reflected in this particular agreement. And there is also a new position for a community resource officer and that individual will engage in things such as recruitment, working with Lansing School District, working with the community in general. And so I think those are kind of, that's kind of a high-level overview. So I would move the contract, I'd move the resolutions, sorry.
Very good. There is a proper motion before us. Is there anyone wish to make a comment before we call the roll? All right, seeing no comment, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion to adopt the ratification of the local number 421 IAFF collective bargaining agreement.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Spataford.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. It is 6:43 and the committee of the hall will adjourn and we'll see you back here at 7 for Lansing City Council.